Okay, it is seven oh four P M on June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. I'm officially calling this meeting to order. Uh Olivia, roll call please.
Trustee Sour, Accent, trustee Alter.
Yeah.
Trustee Walry.
Here.
Trustee Shudding.
Yeah.
Trustee Hanselman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor, uh me Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Rob Allen.
I am present.
And attorney, um Dave Engel.
Alright, um so we do not have Doug, we do not have Elena this evening as well. Um so we have uh enough, yeah.
Right, sure.
Oh, we don't, we don't, we can do the pledge, we don't really don special meetings, but
Oh. No, we don't, okay, I thought we had.
It's totally fine, now it's, we do it for regular meetings, but special meetings, we just kind of jump right into it.
Okay. Okay, what's your name?
Uh alright, so uh the first item up on the agenda, and there was enough business between things that got tabled in the June regular meeting and this evening that I put together an agenda, um is getting an update from uh attorney Dave Engel on the Oak Mitsuwi property, the Oak Mitsuwi agreement, which I can reference in the site management plan as well. Um and then we can have some discussion, we'll open it up to people who want to speak uh regarding the situation and then we'll discuss what the board wants to do next, Dave?
Well, we have a proposed agreement on acquisition or taking title to the Oak Mitsuwi property. There it is, it's up there. Basically, the deal would be this, they'll deed it over and the village will take title to it subject to the site management plan, which is in place, has been approved by D E C. The village's responsibilities for the site will be to continue to maintain the current cap, which is essentially the lawn there. So the village are having to maintain, mowing the property. It would be up to the village to decide whether you want to keep the current really ugly fence, which I really didn't appreciate how ugly it was until Rob and I drove by there this evening. Uh you could remove that, you can leave it, uh it really seems to serve no good purpose at this point. The village would not be responsible for the major, for the major tasks under the site management plan, which will remain with Oak Mitsuwi, uh which would be ongoing monitoring and if need be repairs and maintenance of the cap if the cap fails. The village is obligated to report any failures of the cap, so the village would have an affirmative obligation to in essence inspect the property in a timely manner, but that would be part and parcel of keeping the place mowed. And the village would not be able to do anything that interferes with the site management plan, specifically screwing up the cap, which keeps whatever's under there isolated from the rest of the environment. That's the deal in a nutshell. The, the, the limiting, the limitations that come with this property basically, in simplest terms, is that if you want to do something that's going to require excavation, that's probably, you're going to be limited. You know, there, there's a cap in place, everything's going to have to be from the ground up. So that's one consideration. Second consideration, as you're probably all aware, is it's right up against the Army Corps of Engineers flood control levee. So while it is technically a riverfront property, it's a, it's a riverfront property with, with an asterisk in that you can't really see the river. Which kind of uh is a bit of a downer, but there's really not much the village can do about that except attempt to deal with the Army Corps after the fact to gain access over the levee to allow, you know, uh people to move from the property to the river and I guess to what, to the greenway over there.
To the greenway, yeah.
You're not going to convince them that you can cut through the levee, compromise the levee, that's just not going to happen.
No.
So that's the deal in a nutshell, they will, taking the property basically costs the village nothing. There will be maintenance costs moving forward in terms of the lawn and, you know, sort of routine upkeep of that nature. And the real question is, once the village decides to have the property, takes title, what do you want to do with it? The resolution tonight authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement to take title to the property and to then proceed to a closing, once everything is, has been approved in final legal form. You know, if in discussions going forward with the companies, something arises, then you know, we're not obligated to move ahead. This resolution does not, you know, inultraably commit the village to taking title. There's still going to be a few more steps to go. So that's, that's the deal in a nutshell.
Dave, there's a question for you, when I, when I was just briefly reading through the actual contracts of the regular companies, um under the definitions, if I have it correct, are that contaminants are known or not yet known correctly. So if there was something else to be discovered there, we wouldn't be on the hook, right, so long?
The only way the village would be on the hook, and everyone should be aware of this, is if the village does something that interferes with site management plan. So the contaminants get out and someone is injured, or something is injured by the reason of that. If the stuff just sort of seeps out, gets out on its own, or was there all along, that's not, that's not the village's responsibility. And if someone comes ahead, comes along five years from now and says, oh, you know, years ago, when I was a little kid, I was exposed to something out there, and now I have this, that, or the other thing. You know, that responsibility for those kind of claims will rest on the companies, not on, on the village. Now, I say that, but you know, that's a legal outcome. It, it, it doesn't say that people can't bring lawsuits, people bring lawsuits all the time, and in fact, as you all know.
Can't think of anybody who does that.
As you all know, we recently resolved three extremely frivolous lawsuits brought against the village on account of the P F O A in the water, which were totally baseless, but you know, we got rid of the nuisance value. So people do bring lawsuits, you know, for any kind of reason. So.
So just one, sorry, one more question, because there was, just go on various social media platforms around the village. I think the best way to put it is that we're, we're taking possession of the product, we're really taking possession of the surface of the property, right? And so we can use it for something as long as we adhere to this plan and we keep everything on the surface and there's no digging and we can use it for those purposes.
You know, and technically, we're, the village is taking title to the whole thing, but it's subject, and this is going to have to be worked out in, in the final transaction documents, you know. Oak Mitsuwi does not walk from the thing. Everything that works below the land, that's the responsibility of Oak Mitsuwi. Now, there are things that will have to be worked out before we go to closing. Specifically, I don't think it's a big secret that Oak Mitsuwi has been, let's say, shutting out or closing out its, 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 its presence in North America. I know that as we've worked through the agreement to where it has, it's now presented to you, uh Oak Mitsuwi's attorney has been at times delayed as he has had to interact with corporate offices in Tokyo. And so, you know, my understanding is, and this is certainly not something that is absolutely guaranteed. My hope is that since, it's my understanding that Honeywell has had, has some responsibility for this site as they operated there for a period of time, that they can give us some assurances that if there's a problem in the future, in the absence of Oak Mitsuwi being viable in North America, we will have recourse as to Honeywell for any problems. Because I don't think it, the village, if it faces a problem, wants to have to go, you know, hunt and search for a Oak Mitsuwi at their corporate headquarters in Tokyo.
Now, will Honeywell have access to the site as well, like Oak Mitsuwi, as far as testing sites, like if they will ever?
I don't know, I don't know what, what arrangements exist between Oak and Honeywell in terms of sampling testing.
Okay.
My guess is, is that since Honeywell is involved in Huzek, apparently it's unlikely.
Hmm.
Unlikely to remain so for years to come, that in terms of a site like this, it's highly likely that, you know.
I just wonder if they're, if they were to, I mean, they're not going to dig anything else, they would be probably just accessing.
No, there, there nobody's digging.
No. No, no, I mean as far as like Honeywell in the future.
No.
This, this section of the site management plan speaks about what their in site inspection requirements are,
Okay. Yes.
which is their responsibility, not ours.
Okay.
Quarterly in year one, semiannually in year two, and annually in years three through thirty unless D E C decides earlier is fine. Um and more than likely, they'll just be getting a, a, a local firm, probably the, what, like the same firm that helped them develop this with, and worked with the site with D E C would make be an obvious choice for them, who would just come and do these inspections as needed.
I'm just, you know, I notice that.
Oh, absolutely.
Or case scenario of like if the whole John Street issue will continue in, in the future, like say they have to test.
The, from what we know.
I know it's a strange thing to ask.
I, I, I hesitate to use this term. I was going to say it's more benign than any other site here in town, but that's probably not the right word. It's certainly not as consequential as an environmental issue as for example McCaffrey or, you know, John Street or Liberty Street.
Right.
You know, it, it, there's, there's no indication that there is a soil vapor problem coming from there. There's certainly no indication that whatever happened there has contaminated, you know, the drinking water of this community, God knows, there's enough culprits who are readily apparent for that problem.
I mean, we've, we've all been a part of like the site management plan, there was remedial action of the site, they took out a bunch of soil. Like we, a lot of the contaminants that were above industrial use level have been removed.
Yeah.
Um it was quite, it was quite the project too, so everyone knows, it wasn't, it's not just capped over.
Yeah, exactly. The, the, you know, to put it in perspective, look, D E C has a hierarchical sort of system for rating sites. And the worst sites are class one sites, and there have been very few of those ever in the history of the program, two or three. I'd have to be fortunate of being involved in making all of those, but you know, the standard bad site is a class two. This is a class two over here.
McCaffrey Street is a class two.
Yeah.
Uh John Street is a class two.
Yeah. This site was never even put in the hierarchy.
It was looked into as a, as a potential site, but it didn't advance.
Right, so it, it's not classified as a brownfield?
No.
You could, you, you could get into these issues of nomenclature here, but it's, it's never been a classified site within the state registry.
At any level, or anything.
It's like an R or something, like it's a letter, it's a P.
It's a P.
Yeah, the P site.
It's a P.
So on the.
Which is, which is, which is notwithstanding what jokes you can make about that classification.
So what, the, the contaminant is, is copper sulfate.
Copper sulfate, it was copper sulfate solution, copper sulfate sludge, it was.
And.
There's, there's some other things in the soil as well.
And what's. I mean, how?
Well, those are the main ingredients in there.
Yeah.
If, if we had to take just a, just a thirty thousand foot guess, I mean, we're talking about something that has like a million or half of here, we're talking about something generally.
Well, yeah, well, I, I'm no chemist.
Yeah.
But I don't think things like copper sulfate like break down. I mean, copper, copper is an element, sulfur is an element, copper sulfate's a compound. I don't know if the two of them go their separate ways, but you know, over time, but, but if they do, then you end up with copper, which is fairly benign. That's what their drinking water comes through. But you then would also end up with sulfur, which is, if nothing else, is unpleasant.
But it's, yeah, it's a naturally occurring.
You know, well, yeah, I, I.
It's not a, it's not a.
There are a lot of natural elements.
I mean, they're.
They're not like sulfur.
Yes, and the, the detriment was to, from the vapors and the fumes were detrimental to the people who were there. It wasn't the act, yeah, if you got hit with a copper, I worked there for nine years. The copper sulfate solution, you know, is, it's acidic, it's sulfuric acid, but the fumes, well, were what, were detrimental to your health.
That makes sense, because that's what I heard that was copper sulfate, and that's not a particularly dangerous chemical, as I understand it. And when you're right, if it's vaporized, it gets into your lungs.
You know.
I just spoke with D E C too, and like, oh, that's when the sludge was removed, they took out as much as humanly possible. It's not like a big vat sitting there under the ground.
No, it was like a day leak. This is not a site that's characterized by having vast, you know, having notable quantities of V O Cs, volatile organic compounds.
Right.
You're not getting things like, you know, the remnants of old mass uses of, of solvents like, you know, T C E or.
Benzene.
Things, yeah, things like that.
Trichloroneoneone.
Yeah, all that stuff, which is really a problem. And you know, it's not like some other sites that are notable for, for example, P F O A or P C Bs.
Mercury.
Or, or heavy metals like mercury or lead.
I've just been scrolling through the early part of the site plan, which talks about the history of all the various investigations here. There's just, there's a lot of concise information and it kind of plays it back, but you know, we, 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 we're all familiar with McCaffrey Street and Liberty Street and all the stuff that's come from there. We know John Street had um V O C concerns residentially, and actually it was our sewer project that ended up helping them find kind of the lead uh V O C location. Um nothing of that nature has ever been here. They did testing for all this stuff, especially being in such close proximity to John Street, and of course, having a, a pretty solid full history. Uh one thing uh actually came up, because I remember feeling it, someone uh had been concerned that there were barrels buried on site. D E C even did a separate investigation on that and didn't find it. So I mean, it's, it's, it's been pretty well investigated. Um one of the things that I had asked, and I'm trying to see if I have the memo here, uh Mark Millsfall of Sterling Environmental, um reviewed uh the site closure plan and um uh the agreements and just took a little bit of time, and I've shared this with the trustees, but there's no problem with making this uh out there, I asked him specifically to review it and, and, and talk specifically about what the village's responsibilities would and would not be. Um and as, as, as expected, and this is basically what we've been saying, and what Dave has already said, the cover system, fencing, um those are items that will be covering, and the rest of that um is going to be the, the company's responsibility. So I'll leave this on the screen, I'll just kind of scroll through it, but it's there. Um at this point, um.
Just one question.
Yeah, please.
Then it also includes the parking lot across the street, correct?
It does, it does.
Okay, that's one, okay, that's all.
Yes, yeah, definitely.
I just want to say that I um, I sort of started researching other communities that have worked on brownfields and reclaimed back and re, redeveloped brownfields, and they're all really glad they did. I mean, there's all kinds of things, different things, built housing, or parks, or playground, whatever, I mean, tons of stuff.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And um it's happening all over the place, and people are, and those are actual brownfields, this is needed.
Yeah.
Right.
So there's loads of good things we can do, and other communities have done it safely, so.
Yes, and actually, we were at the six P M um sit- wing meeting over at the school before we came here. And we were there to kind of talk about this agreement and the situation, and it was actually the town supervisor, Sir Dam, who brought up exactly what you said, but locally, we know in Bennington Willow Park, as this beautiful park that many of us have grown up with,
Right, that's right.
I didn't realize until maybe about eight years ago, that the history of that was, that was the town of Huzek Landville for nearly two decades. Um and it was investigated by the state and by E P A, and it was closed and capped. And the, the thing that we know is Willow Park, where I have tons of memories with my kids growing up, is this type of site, which was a landfill has this material investigated, capped, covered, and developed as park and, you know.
Mm-hmm. Huge infestive.
Big cities, small towns are all, everybody's, because otherwise you're just now useless land.
Yeah.
And so long as it's safe.
Right, and it looks, you know, with the fence and it looks like, you know.
Yeah. Let me scroll down.
Mm-hmm.
Can you wait one second?
Oh, sorry, sure.
Uh let's see. See, of where it says uh S M P two, section three point three point three.
Yes.
The uh third bullet, it says the section, the section of storm sewer that was add along the western point of the site uses existing site soils to backfill utility trench. Future maintenance or repair of this portion of the sewer may trigger the E W P.
That's the excavation work plan, so if by chance, we had to repair that,
Okay. Mm-hmm.
then it would be a situation where we'd have to review the evacuation work plan, we'd have to contact D E C and explain the scope of work, have D E C review it, and either say, yes, it's fine, or yes, it's fine, but you now also have to consider X, Y, Z.
Okay, so say something, they're like, yep, you're good with that, and then there's something that comes out, what, what happens next?
There, there.
Yeah, the excavation work plan, unzappily, and I haven't gotten committed to number, probably has some protocols that have to be installed, like keeping control of the excavator material, probably covering it over, making sure it doesn't just sort of wash away in event of a serious rainstorm. Years ago, I worked on a project, believe it or not, where we were representing clients who were doing a residential property on former ag lands and thinking, gee, well, what can be the problem? The problem was these were old orchard lands from an era when the, the pesticide of choice was D D T and lead arsenic sprays. And we came up with a whole soil management plan for dealing with those. And it was all, all of the soils were interred on site under the roadways, but we had to have an excavation work plan in the event, in the future, you had to excavate through the roadways and deal with utility tums.
Right.
And that, that's an example, you know, once, if, once you have that stuff stored away under a cap, when you dig into it, you have to treat it responsibly when you take it back out for whatever purpose.
Right.
You may take it back out.
So I just went to the, that part of the site management plan to bring that up, so I'll just leave that up on the screen if you want to review that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Or any other questions? So I built in a people to be heard in case anyone wanted to speak in one way or the other about this and share their thoughts. I will say that, you know, we, we are all keenly aware of the social media thoughts shared, not saying that um some of the, the, the comments or concerns aren't legitimate, regardless of whatever the presentation was. Um I, I did receive an email from uh Harold Stevens that I said I would enter into the record, and I think he emailed all of the board individually.
He did, yes, he did.
Um it just noted that we'll be considering to allow uh the mayor to enter an agreement to obtain the property, his comment, and uh just because the current site is capped and not leaking contamination does not mean that this will be the case in the future. Does the village really want to take on this responsibility? Uh which I feel like you have, in a sense, addressed that concern about how liability would work if a situation like that was addressed, but that's all right. And in consideration of the men and women that worked in this facility who have developed some form of cancer um and or rare disease, um I urge you not to proceed with this resolution. So I just wanted to enter that into the record. Uh there were several people who were very glad to see this, looking to see good things come out of it and proactive approach to the village. There were others who were legitimately concerned about contamination now or in the future, so that, that's all out there. So, would anyone like to speak on this, share their thoughts, anything? Yes, Mary Ann, please.
So, uh my name is Mary Ann Zwickelbauer, and um I'm the president of Huzek Rising, and we look forward to um something that might be park-like at some time in that section of the village, um which is in dire need of green space and places to be outside, um you know, they don't have a, a lot of yard, it would be a great place for kids to run.
Mm-hmm.
Um I'm wondering whether you have the D E C's paperwork to Oak Mitsuwi, which spells out where you can do what, like where can trees be planted, how big can the trees be? Um I mean, if you can remediate a brown site, you've got to be able to plant stuff, right?
Um, probably not.
I, there, there was in one of the.
The, the problem, the problem, we do, we do, just.
Sure, go for it.
Is, when you have a cap site, one of the classic problems is the growth of substantial vegetation. Typically, for example, on landfill closures, there's nothing there, because it breaks the cap.
But you know, even as the Willow Park is like completely shielded.
Well, each site has its own thing, and one has its own closure plan.
So that's what I mean, is there a closure plan that we can see which tells us?
There's a site management plan, and to the best of my knowledge, and subject to checks, there like, I don't think you're going to be able to do substantial plantings out there, you know, that's.
I'm.
And then to go edge to edge, because the other thing would be, can the perimeter be treated?
Well, there's, there is trees on one front that are pretty, right, they, part of it is they planted already.
Part of it can be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying, in that full uh site management plan, which is like this two hundred and fifty page document, uh there was a sort of conceptual idea that showed generically, you could put bushes and, and, and things here and trees over in this one section, and um I'm trying to find that for you right now, so I can put that on the screen.
But, and there's other areas that too, I mean, I don't know how deep, if you'd like, a, a tree's going to root itself either, but you have concrete still, the con, some of the concrete wasn't removed.
Right, on purpose.
So, intentionally, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of it is concrete, rubble, bricks, stuff like that, so. You'd probably have to do plantings if you were going to, if you were going to, sort of add soil to the area and plant in that, like for used sites or something, it most likely be fine as long as the roots are built within the cap. And you see it probably as that would be.
There are, there, there are a lot of practical problems, I mean, there's a few suggestions that you raise the whole site with grain and soil,
Yeah.
but then you start doing calculations, it's the amount of soil you need, and the, and the numbers become, you know, kind of daunting after a while, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, um they, I, I, I chatted with D E C about kind of just a preliminary estimate on what they spent on just the soil alone to add the couple feet, it, it may have been a seven figure number.
Oh.
Just in terms of, I mean, if you're talking two feet of soil across everywhere.
Right, it's two foot, right.
Uh I did find a conceptual closure plan. Uh I'm going to put this up on the screen, and it's probably going to be super hard.
That's the whole area.
Oh man, alright, there you are.
I mean, if you did, if you did like, why use that planting, so it's like, not the key.
So this um is in the document, it's document page one ninety, it's figure twenty seven. Um this was developed by um C H A, and it talks about um trees and shoves, kind of shrubs and wildflowers in this area um of the possible walkway path across here, which in my mind, I'd either love to see it run this way or run across this way, because that's the closest to the parking and to the corner there.
Yep.
Um and it pretty much consistently shows this area as not much on it.
Right.
And I, and if you scroll way up in the document, you'll, I'll, I'll do it in a minute, so you don't have to get motion sickness from me doing on the screen, but um it, it, it kind of shows the overlay of where the old uh plant was and where the concrete is, I'll, I'll find that.
Uh-huh.
But I know this exists in there, it just kind of is a general idea.
Alright, I'll look for it.
Um it's, it's page one ninety of the document.
Okay.
Um and if you can't find it, tell me, I'll, I'll, I'll find that for you. Um and one of the things actually that I, that we have been talking about in, uh internally as well is in marrying this with New York Forward, uh the opportunity that lays there, um to come up with a design for something like this, it really is going to take two type, different types of firms working together. The first is someone who is familiar with taking lands, ideally land that is, has, you know, um an industrial history behind it, and can help us come to a, a design and a vision that fits with what we're trying to accomplish and do down there. But secondarily, having Sterling Environmental connected to this, as the people who dive into the data and know all the stuff and say, I know you're trying to do X, but you can't do it here, but you could do it here.
Uh-huh.
We need both of those groups together, and I've already reached out um to Sterling Environmental to get an idea of what that would cost. We've already started to talk about other firms we can approach, and I think that those two firms working for the village and income combination with New York Forward will help us come up with a, a good plan for this. I don't expect a huge amazing thing there, I would love if we could get maybe a pavilion that has,
Right.
um you know, a, a public restroom that's open seasonally, that would be fantastic, yeah.
Pituitary.
Something like what you have at the barbecue rec, or um there's a park down in, I can't, I feel like it's Skodak or Nassau. You can have small events there, you could actually use it as a stage for a theater, you could use it as a music venue and everyone can be out across the park, there's a lot of really good options there. But anytime you're talking about um plumbing, water, sewer, and electric, that typically means excavation, and uh as I spoke with Mark uh from Sterling.
Unless you do it above a ground field.
Yes, so if you, if you know it's seasonal and you know you're going to bleed the lines out, there's different ways to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll just throw this one up on the screen as well, because this kind of shows the site on this, but.
Yeah, that's a cover.
Yeah, this is just one of the many. Yeah, this is just one of the many pictures of the old location and kind of lays out the strange parcel distribution there. But it does mention that the parking lot is part of that, cause I know that question came up.
Yes.
And I feel like this little doohickey also would become ours, that's, that's weird parcel that's.
The other side of the tracks, that's not.
Just that weird thing sitting over there.
I don't, I don't think that's a win.
But it, it does, right, you can, it's the greenway has to.
Well, it does. Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And it does give us access to say, set up a security camera too, if we uh, wanted to do that. If there were issues going on in there.
If there was trees left there.
If there were trees left, yeah. Um, so, anything else you want to say, Mary Ann?
Uh, no, that's enough.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, that is uh, fine. So hearing none, board, um, we have the resolution in front of us and as Dave said, this resolution is just authorizing uh, the action. It's not officially pulling the trigger. Um, but we can, we have a lot of options. We can move forward with it, we can table it, we can vote no, we can move into executive session if you have other pertinent questions that are of, of the type that wouldn't be for open meetings. What would you guys like to do?
I'd like to make a motion that we move on the resolution.
You want to formally introduce the resolution?
Yes, I would.
Alright, let me read it into the record. Um, and again, this is on our website, uh, and it's up there and with our copies here. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a transfer agreement relative to the transfer of eighty-first street currently owned by Oakmetsui Technologies LLC to the village. We have gone through uh, this whereas referencing the um, various consent orders, site characterization remedial investigation, the site management plan, uh, transfer agent would allow the village to acquire property. Uh, wow, so I don't need to read all this, Dave, right?
Uh, probably not.
Is there anything else you want to highlight on it?
No.
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved.
We, we, we removed all the typos since we opened today.
We did, we did, I was very proud of myself. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that this village board for the village of Who's It Falls does hereby accept land from Oakmetsui Technologies LLC located at eighty-first street in the village of Who's It Falls and hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a transfer agreement attached hereto and made a part hereof and any other documents necessary for the transfer of said lands to the village of Who's It Falls as approved in final form by legal counsel. Uh, Bobby, it sounded like you wanted to offer this resolution.
Yes.
Is there a second? Uh, I'll give it to Deb, but she moved faster because you are slow. Uh, alright, any discussion on this? Any thoughts you guys want to put out there?
We're gonna talk further with what, what we're gonna do with it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Right.
We're just, yeah.
We can't do anything if we don't have it, we don't own it.
True.
So, then we, then we can't move forward, newer, forward part of it.
Right.
If, if we don't own it.
Right. Um, okay, I guess hearing none, uh, we're ready to move to a roll call vote?
Okay, trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Walry?
Yes.
Trustee Shudding?
Yes.
Trustee Hansman?
Yes.
Trustee Sour Absent, Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And Mayor Rob Allen.
I mean, yes. Alright, so it is uh, officially adopted. Um, I will continue to update the board and the community as we progress to the final documents and finally executing the agreement. Uh, so we know, we know the timeline. Alright, a few other items uh, on the agenda. Uh, in terms of water supply development, I threw all this together. Uh, we have a new agreement uh, that would give access to uh, the company's um, uh, environmental or engineering firm CT Mail to come in and replace the balance tank. This is part of the GAC filtration building and system that operates as a buffer between our existing plants and the GAC filtration system, it literally sits right in the middle. And um, it has been down for a long time, as we've been trying to decide on what the best uh, course of, of action was to replace it. Um, we want to see this happen, we understand that without this, there's difference in pressure on the GAC side of the system that affects our plant side that will be back to gone when the balance tank comes back in. So um, this was tabled at the last meeting because we only had four in attendance at the last meeting and one recusal. So we did not have the full uh, access to vote. Uh, so for this one, um, trustees, do you have any questions on this? I know we've talked about this a lot over email. Um, in that case, um, we have a resolution. Do we have a resolution on this one? Let me find it. Nope.
Yeah.
Is this the one?
Which, for the balance?
I gotta find which resolution it says.
Which one you talk, are you talking the?
The balance?
Balance, yeah.
This is the balance thing, I.
Yeah, we have.
Was it a resolution?
It just says discussion.
Sorry, we have like four resolutions, so I have to find the right one here.
Oh, no, we didn't.
Yeah.
That was fair.
You can have access agreement.
See, this is the one for the wells.
Sorry, it was boring.
Thanks, Bob.
It's alright.
Right here, access agreement, village, you know, water, town, water. That was when we had it last, we, we had it last meeting and we didn't act on it.
Oh, okay, it's right here, okay. This is the one, this is the access agreement?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the one you should act on.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
But it doesn't kind of like the motion or anything?
Um, it has a whereas and a now therefore be it resolved. Um, so this shouldn't be a resolution, this should be a motion authorizing the mayor. I put the wrong thing in there.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Move the village.
Yep, I, I'm just noticing that I messed up the um.
Do you judge it scared me?
I messed up the agenda because I have a duplicate here, that's the problem. Um, the first item in this area is, uh, I had incorrectly copied and pasted the wrong thing. We have a resolution authorizing uh, the mayor to execute access and maintenance agreement, not for the balance tank. This is for access to the wells. My apologies on this confusion. So let me do this one first, it's this one that's up on the screen. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute access and maintenance agreement. This will allow the companies to do the work they need to do at and across wellfields, which is uh, ours is, ours now ours is in the process of becoming ours.
You have title.
Okay, we have title of it.
Let me explain what it is.
Please do.
Sanco Bay, early on in all of this, years ago, put in some monitoring wells over on what is now the property of the village, the new wellfield is, okay? Those monitoring wells have been determined to be no longer appropriate by DEC and they have to be closed out. And this is, there's nothing terribly exotic about this. And um, under the plan, Sanco Bay is putting, I believe, a, a single new monitoring well over somewhere on that property.
Mm-hmm.
And all this does is allows Sanco Bay and frankly, its contractor, probably CT Mail, access to the village property to do this work, accomplish it. They hold you harmless if they screw up. And they're just waiting for us to execute this and allow them to go out there and work on there and wrap that little bit up. It is, it is among everything going on on the Who's It Quarter thing, about the most mundane thing I can think of.
Yeah.
Just have to have it in place in order to do it.
Yeah, they're ready to go.
Yes. So, now therefore be it resolved by the board of trustees of the village of Who's It Falls in regular session. Duly convenience follows that this board of trustees says hereby authorize the mayor to enter into and execute an access and maintenance agreement with Sanco Bay as more fully set forth in the agreement attached hereto and made a part hereof. So we need the resolution to be offered and ex, uh, seconded.
Um, we'll get, make a motion.
Thank you, Bobby.
Go ahead, Dan.
Dan will second it, although I feel like peer pressure pulled apart in that.
I, I did feel coerced.
Um.
I hear I was trying to be nice and give it to her.
Any, yeah, under duress, second under duress. Any um, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Walry?
Yes.
Trustee Shudding?
Yes.
Trustee Hansman?
Recuse myself.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Rob Allen?
Yes.
And Doug Sour Absent.
Alright, thank you. I love how Brett's trying to shrink into like this tiny bit of nothingness and avoid eye contact because he has to recuse. No worries, alright.
Just, just to be clear, make, make sure, make sure you get me copies of everything that gets done here tonight, so I can.
Yeah.
Sure.
I do owe this back, that one back to uh, Sanco Bay tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, now regarding the balance tank, which is the second item. Um, we've already discussed ad nauseam the, the balance tank issues and us wanting to replace it. Uh, I'm simply looking for a motion that would authorize the mayor to execute an access agreement for balance tank replacement at no cost to the village. So I just need someone to offer and second the motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Megan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bobby. Further discussion? Hearing none, I will do a roll call vote on this, just so Brett gets to recuse himself again. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Walry?
Yes.
Trustee Shudding?
Yes.
Trustee Hansman?
To recuse.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Right, Mayor Rob Allen?
Yes.
And then trustee Sour Absent.
Sorry Brett, it's important to have on the record.
That's alright.
Alright, uh, and third and finally, the other item that was tabled, uh, we have a resolution uh, authorizing payment of invoices to the third party. This is the tenth one of these, lucky number ten that we have done. And uh, it's the same escrow account, it's the same um, fees back from our agreement in May tenth of twenty twenty-three. This is for legal fees for twenty-nine sixty-seven and for engineering fees for seven hundred forty-two. All to be paid out of the escrow account provided by the companies. Um, so I've gone over this, we've done this time previous times. Uh, who would like to offer the resolution? Deb would like to, oh, second it?
Second.
Bobby, sorry, Dan, you're slow again. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Alter?
Yeah.
Trustee Walry?
Yeah.
Trustee Shudding?
Yes.
Trustee Hansman?
To recuse.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Rob Allen?
Yes.
And trustee Sour Absent.
Alright, great, thank you.
With all that, can I leave?
Um, you don't want to stay, this is exciting stuff.
No.
I know, I.
No, you're fine, you're good to go, thank you.
Hard time containing my excitement.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I know. I don't blame you one bit, Dave.
Alright.
Look, I want, I want to go home. I paid these, I, I paid these contractors today before I came over here. I want to make sure that they finish the work. Boy, you want to make sure it lasts forty to fifty years, right?
Yeah, you, you don't have much time to look out that bay window. You would have said it.
The stupidest thing is, my wife had, had me pay for the window treatments for that window before we finally chose if the window was gonna be an added install.
Hopefully it all works.
Thank you, Dave.
Happy wife, happy life.
Thank you, Dave.
Smart man.
Alright, so.
How can I?
I see you all, have a nice evening, take care.
Bye.
Continue again.
Yep.
Thanks for the ride. Alright, um, regarding the transfer station. Uh, which has come up a, quite a bit, um, with the bear and the DEC investigation or sighting and the fixes and so on and so forth. Um, our longtime transfer station operator and before that, he was a longtime municipal building, uh, cleaner, janitor for, forever. Uh, Charlie Preble, uh, Chuck, has uh, announced and given his two weeks notice. So his two weeks are actually up, I think this Saturday will be his last time.
Saturday's his last day, yes.
Oh my god.
Uh, so um, unfortunately, I am looking for a motion to accept the resignation of Charlie Preble as our transfer station operator. And I have it effective uh, Sunday, June thirtieth.
How long has Chuck been the operator, roundabout?
Oh my god.
He's been there a while, right?
I think, that's a Denise and Judy question.
Oh, God, it's.
He's been like a permanent.
It's, yeah, cause I, I meant to ask Denise that to, today too, which is, it's.
Long as I've been here.
Yeah.
At least, at least twelve or thirteen, he's been at the, helping the transfer station at least.
And you're thinking it's at least what, twenty?
We should do something for him.
I, it's, I, he's the only one I've ever known, I'm not over there, but.
Yeah.
Over there, how long have you been here? I've been here twenty years. Okay.
So we're, we're, we're actually trying to organize it at the regular meeting and a nice little thank you, some, some cake and stuff, so that's.
So maybe, I could be more.
Like meal. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, I, I, that's probably what I'm waiting to do right now.
That's very much in the plan, so.
Okay, very much, yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, I need someone to offer and second the motion. Thank you, Dan, thank you, Deb, further discussion? Thank you Chuck for uh, so many years of service. In fact, it's gonna be a product to us to figure out exactly how many, but I bet Denise has that.
Yeah.
Um, any other discussions?
Excepted with regret. Excepted with regret.
Excepted with regret, definitely. All in favor?
He's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of people missing him on.
I oppose or abstentions? Carries, alright, so we have a.
When is he leaving, I'm sorry, what is he?
Uh, Saturday will be his last day.
Saturday's his last day.
Yeah.
That's short.
He gave us two weeks, so we're just, we're, we're, we're doing it like, he gave us the two weeks like about a week and a half ago.
He, he, boy, he gave us two weeks, huh?
Uh, I'm gonna have to go on Saturday.
So. Absolutely. So we have.
I'm gonna have to think for him too. Okay, I'm already thinking like a bee, the bear on him.
I don't know if they've woke us up well.
No, I'm joking.
So.
Maybe he though.
So we have a resolution, um, that would appoint a new transfer station operator. Um, I'm gonna read this and give a little bit of background to it as well. Whereas the village of Who's It Falls Board of Trustees is seeking to hire a transfer station operator to fill a soon to be vacant position in that job title. And whereas the village board of trustees desires to appoint a current employee who works at the wastewater treatment plant Keith Pierce, uh, to fill the role of transfer station operator in addition to his job duties and responsibilities in his current job title of assistant wastewater treatment plant operator. Now therefore be it resolved by the board trustees of the village of Who's It Falls in regular session, duly convenience uh, follows. One, the village of Who's It Falls Board of Trustee hereby appoints Keith Pierce as a transfer station operator for the village of Who's It Falls. Number two, Keith Pierce will remain in his current position of assistant wastewater treatment plant operator and will fill both roles. The village recognizes that in proceeding this way, that Keith Pierce is not an overtime exempt employee and he will be paid overtime for anywhere performed by him beyond his regular full-time work week. Three, during the seasonal time that the transfer station is open, uh, that's on Tuesdays from eight to noon. Uh, and that runs April first to November thirtieth. Keith Pierce will work at the transfer station on those Tuesdays for four hours in lieu of working at the wastewater treatment plant. He will not be paid anything additional during this time beyond his current salary. On Saturdays year round, Keith Pierce will work at the transfer station at, uh, from eight AM to two PM at the blended hourly rates of twenty-one dollars, twenty-one cents, subject to overtime pay, which is a one point five modifier. So that will actually be thirty-one eighty-two an hour for those six hours. Uh, so before we discuss it further, I need someone to offer and second the resolution.
Can you, can you edit that at all?
I sure can.
After the word subject to overtime pay, it should say, and I, I apologize, I can't overturn documents.
No, you're fine.
Time on my phone. If applicable, after the word overtime pay, if.
Uh, yep.
If he only works.
If he takes a day off during the week, he won't pay overtime, right?
We don't pay overtime, right? If applicable, right?
So give me just one minute, um, actually, I'll save it afterwards. I'm doing this in words and I will make a use of it at least.
I think he said, I'll make your fault.
Uh, I think that's the wrong one, just kidding. There it is.
So, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Alright, what number am I doing?
At, at the very end, it says subject to overtime pay, after the word overtime pay, if applicable.
Uh, after the hourly rate?
No, no, after the word pay. After the word pay, if applicable. Because if he, if, let's just say he only works, he has to be over forty.
No. Right, that makes sense.
So it's only applicable.
That makes sense. So before we discuss further, I need someone to offer the resolution as amended.
I make that.
Bobby, second, Brett, thank you.
I make that.
So, uh, in discussion with our ca, labor council and our trustee who lives in the world of labor relations, uh, we got to more understand how overtime pay that works and doesn't work, how blended pay works. And we've already spoken with Kenny, who is both our DPW superintendent and our wastewater treatment plant main operator. He understands that he'll be covering some time there during Keith's uh, seasonal hours. Um, and there's a, there's a particular approach to blended pay. You have to take the hours per week of the regular salary, the hours uh, additional from whatever the other pay is for a transfer station operator. Average that all together and that's what it comes out to. And I want a patch for getting the numbers right.
Yes, you did get it right.
I want a patch.
You did, you did, did get it right.
So it's a little bit of a peculiar situation, but Keith has a background here with our DPW. He knows the transfer station. He is, um, he, he got to interview with, with Bobby and Kenny. Um, and he's, he's just a guy who has done so much good stuff for the village. And when there's need, he fills it, he's always happy to do it.
Yeah, that's an underst, I mean, he's the nicest guy, I mean, when we had the issue back at the sandbarmer, when the sewer kept backing up. I mean, he babysat from all night long till three o'clock in the morning. Sat in that pump house, making sure that to be able to shut the, shut the, the pump off if it overflowed.
Yeah.
All night long, he sat in, in, in there and, and we mentioned it at the, the meeting. He was like, he said, first thing he said to me, I want to thank you for mentioning me to you and the rest of the board, even bringing it up, that, that what I did. He said, I would do anything for the village, you know, he's just that type of guy.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
And, and, and he's dedicated and he's, you know, he hasn't taken his vac, vacation, he hasn't taken a vacation day in four years. That's a God's honest truth. He does not take vacation.
I want to both congratulate him and say, what are you thinking?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he, he told me that too.
Hey, if he's comfortable, he likes this.
The sewer will still flow.
There you go, that's right. Um, trustees, any other comments, questions? Alright, hearing none, uh, I think this is a roll call vote.
Yep.
Yep?
Trustee Sour Absent, trustee.
Trusty Sour absent, Trusty Alter.
Yes.
Trusty Walry. Trusty Shudding.
Yes.
Trusty Hansman.
Yes.
W Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And Mayor Rob Allen.
Yes, a huge yes. Alright, so I put this on the agenda just because it was the only other thing that was tabled from the last meeting.
Yes.
We don't have to discuss it further, but as I am a Housen Falls Center School employee and this ties into that, I am passing this off to Bobby and I am out of the conversation unless you need technical questions about our current website. Bobby, take it away.
Okay, well, do we wanna discuss it tonight, I guess that's the big question. I mean, are we prepared to discuss it? I'll, I'll discuss it.
Yeah, I'm kind of discussing it, I think we need to, um it needs to start at least.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we should move on that.
Are we gonna move on it tonight though?
Why not?
Uh.
No, I'm just asking, I mean, I'm, are we at that point?
I think we need to give super and deal with the answer.
We, we at least need to move on it for the point of giving the school, because the school has to have a agree.
Of the school.
Yes.
I. I agree. I can comment on that because I did have a, I did have a conversation with Pat and I didn't wanna leave him in the works because I'd rather tell someone no than leave him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what I said to him was, that there's not a definite answer, but if I was him, I would make contingency plans to um to look at it as a, as a dual relationship instead of a tribe relationship between the town and the school. Um you know, I I'll just say from my own personal point of view, I do understand that making work is a things that are cheaper. To me, it doesn't matter, I just, I just, we have some problems with getting some stuff posted and raw, it's, it's, you can't, you can't take it all on right here, like, and I, I.
No, it's too much for one person.
I've spent about twenty hours over the past two weeks on the website.
Yeah, so we, we really.
I made significant steps, there's a lot more to go, but that's twenty hours I can't spend on this stuff.
So I think, I think there's unanimous, I think there's a unanimous thought, that we need a person, we need a person.
We need a website.
Oh yeah, for sure.
So, I mean, if we can do it cheaper, that's fine, I just wanna make sure. There's no offense to you, Rob, at all.
No, no.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I understand that.
It it's um, we we need to make sure we have someone all the time, so.
We, yeah, we agree.
Um it's someone who not just designs a website, but that we can call and say, listen, we need this poster, that poster, we need it on there today because it's immediate, that's what I say, whatever. Uh so however we get there, we get there, I just wanna make sure that we have that person because we do get a lot of endpoints, if you, we don't social, we.
Oh.
Alright.
And it's, and it's bona fide, right, that we're, the stuff is is being, is being, you know, put up at the last minute and that's because we, we don't got it, we don't have a guy.
That's also a designer, it makes a very different.
Well, and as far as the number was concerned, Dan, wasn't it, what was the number, the number was like, I remember.
Yeah. Under twenty dollars.
It was under twenty and that was the whole obligation, or was that yearly?
Yes, that was, no, that, well, that's yearly.
That was yearly, it was twenty thousand a year.
That's yearly. One half of one half of the salary, so twenty five percent of the.
Okay. That's what I thought, it was twenty thousand a year.
Twenty five.
So I just.
And is that the, is that the same for how much he's gonna be working for us, twenty five percent of?
I, you know, I I I don't know, I I don't think there's um, i- if I was just a betting man, I don't think there's so much work there that we need to like reserve time, so I think that um I think everything will get done without having to quarter things, you know what I'm saying, like, I don't know if we need to like.
Like, does that have a time clock, you say, oh, I got a question, oh, I guess we'll do this.
Uh I've already, yeah, I've, uh, we're at twenty six percent, guys, call me next month, I don't think that's, that would be the case. Um I just think based on the workload of each of the three entities, it will, it will, it will be roughly in that area. But for me, like again, for me, the most important thing is, we we gotta.
Getting a website.
Yes, we gotta get a website, and we have to have someone who we can call and say, I need this done, and he or she is like, yeah, I'll have it up in twenty minutes. And 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 that being said, Brett, you and Megan, you guys have done a lot of, I I I mean, you guys have done the research on it, so.
Yeah. So I, yeah, I've been um in contact with a couple of different website developing companies, um I contacted one, uh Delta Animations um last week, they were pretty high still when it came to like, um I guess you could call it marketing, where like you're, you're still, you're putting out posts, like letting people know what we're doing, um, yeah, it's P, it's PR, and and that seemed pretty high and it it was,
You depend on PR first.
Yeah, PR, right, public relations, yeah, for sure.
To me, it's like, I understand we need this, but can we do it at a more cost-effective price that's like not twenty thousand dollars a year?
Well, can we do it as well?
Well, so.
As well, exactly.
So that was roughly what, the price you had was roughly twenty?
So.
From Delta Animations, when we contacted um Divide by Nine, he's gonna charge us so much for the website development and then it would be so much per hour, whatever our use could be, I don't, it was.
And we can put them on Mediana.
Yeah.
Right.
And there's like a payment plan, which is more feasible, I think, for us budgetarily than saying, oh, we're gonna pay someone twenty thousand dollars a year and for me, I really, really believe we need a website that's up to date, that functions for everything that we need, for our employees, stuff like that. He sounded more than able to do all of the things that we were asking for.
What do you mean for website for the employees?
It's like the portal, remember we get, uh maybe employees sign in, where we could do a portal where they have access to um their pay.
Yeah. Their insurance, okay, yeah.
Instruct.
There's the information, the co- the code, that they're using on.
That wasn't out of the scope of his capabilities, um and then it would basically be as far as the hands-on, like if we have, say, a meeting notice that we need posted, which is by law something we have to do, do we need them to do that, can we have someone in the office do that?
Yes, we do, no, no, that's the problem, no.
No, we have.
We need some, if we're gonna do this, we need someone who's gonna do it all, we, that's the problem we have now, it's falls back on Ross.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So aside aside from this, when I was trying to redesign the website on my own time, uh if we used something like WordPress, that would allow you to set up users who could do different things, you would still have someone overseeing everything and changing content.
The drop box.
So. Yeah.
But if you set up a certain type of posts to be classified as, say, notices.
Right.
Olivia can write it, she submits it, the website knows exactly how to handle it, organize it and and so on.
Red, white.
So. In our discussion with Jeremy, this was something, uh he's, Divide by Nine, um he's the old, that's the only
Who's Jeremy?
Divide by Nine, yeah.
Okay.
web developer that Deb and I have met with Megan.
We had, I don't know if you know that we had a Zoom discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, um in that conversation, the thing that like drew my attention was how user-friendly Jeremy can make the website to where there is an office associate with his.
Glovers, Gloversville?
Gloversville.
Yeah, with the Gloversville website, where literally all she does is take whatever information and essentially it's dropped into a Dropbox and automatically put to where it needs to go.
And that was like audio files, I know some of the recordings, all of that would go in that one slide.
And it's a WordPress, it's a Wor- he does WordPress, that's right.
And it's.
And he also had it linked to Facebook so that any notices that were posted.
On the website, went went to Facebook as well.
On the website.
Automatically, yeah.
Went directly to Facebook as well. And the Facebook page was on the website as well, so that you could scroll.
Oh, and the calendar too, it was so, that was one pilot too, I like that, you could actually put your calendar in
Yeah. Yes.
It always is.
And then it would just automatically come up to let everyone know when the meeting is, what time it is, it populates itself.
So. He didn't. In our meeting, he didn't really give us an exact number as far as cost. It sounded like around a hundred dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm, and the Gloversville say it was, I think, fifty five hours, is what he said, so we'd have to figure out exactly what we want, let him know.
But. About fifty five hours. So roughly fifty five hundred dollars.
And then how much was, is the maintenance?
The retainer is a hun- it was again a hundred dollars per hour.
Yeah, and what he said, he did something like an average of like an hour or two a month or something, like that, and he does maintenance.
Yeah, that he. Which I was just sitting here doing the math real quick, if he works, works six hours a month, I mean, that's seventy two hundred dollars a year versus twenty to, or twenty.
mostly seventeen to twenty, like what you're saying, right?
Seventeen to twenty thousand in the agreement with the school.
After the initial, after the initial ins- getting the load up, while they're running fifty.
Yeah, and he also said, what did he say, a timeline of like three months, and it's up and running.
Yeah, he can do, he can do it fast. What are, what are.
But his other thing too with it taking three months was,
Oh yeah.
you know, if he asks a question and it takes two weeks to get an answer, that's gonna draw out the time too, so the sooner we can answer his questions of what we want and how we want it and, you know.
And you know that really cool feature that I was all about when Pat said, oh, we can, we can text our constituents and let them know automatically if there's an emergency, I think, it has the same feature. So you could literally have someone subscribe, email or text message and you can send everyone a message. Like snow emergency, no parking on whatever street, they'll get it, cause I thought that was really amazing that we'd be able to do that and we'll be able to do that with that website as well.
And with linking.
Do you want, do you wanna?
Like we talked about with the school, the school website would have a link that went to our page and went to the town page and all. We can also do that with Jeremy as well, you know, he can set it up to where there's a section.
It goes to the school as well.
That.
Yeah.
Can go to the school's portal, school or school's website, same with town website, so you can have a central area for all town things. Or all Housen Falls things, I should.
I, I think it's important to have something that's, that's ours, especially with all the stuff that's going on, that's focused on the village, you know, and um you know, if you go to the town, you might find, if you go to the big website, the the three-way website, it may, you may find it, you may not, it could be, I don't know, we don't know what school is like.
It might get lost.
It might get cluttered, it might get lost, and we've got a lot of big stuff going on and I think, I think there should be something that when you type in Housen Falls, that's where you get, and it's us and only us. And I think that's important right now.
No, I mean, I I think, I mean, is it something that we're, we, do we wanna, uh we can't act on it tonight, right? We just need to make a decision what we're gonna do with the school, it's pretty much what you do, we have to get more information from.
Right.
Right, it do.
Tomorrow I'm talking with um Valentina from Fly on website, they're giving me quotes, I, you know, we have, we do have to get quotes and get
Okay.
the numbers squared away, but I do think giving Pat an answer um is the appropriate thing to do.
Okay. So do we wanna make a decision tonight whether about the the school or not, and, okay, so we just, can we, I mean.
I'd love to. It doesn't need a roll call vote, I think we, I mean, we can.
We don't need a, a formal, do we don't need anything formal, we just, I mean.
I don't think so.
I'm for finding our own person to be able to.
Deb, you are the same.
But, but, I'm, we're not for, the thing about the one, the the meat, the really good thing about the school, about the three-way, is that it's gonna get done, we know it's gonna get done, they are not gonna drag their feet because they're gonna pay big bucks, right, the company. So the one thing that I think Jeremy, if we work with, say Jer- I'm just saying Jeremy, cause we actually talked to him, but um is that.
Yeah. Right.
Wait, tell us the dream thought. Sorry, guys, sorry.
Um.
It was like.
If we, if we work with, you're talking about like getting things done quickly and efficiently with the, with the person that's working with the school and the town, that it would get.
Oh, I know, I have to say, if we say we're not going with the school,
Mm.
I don't want us to drag our feet.
Right.
The thing about going with the school is it's gonna make us do it now.
Right, yeah, no, by the way, that's what I'm asking, if we're, if we're not gonna go to school, we need to make a decision by the July meeting, is that fair enough?
And that's the, that's the only reason I go to school.
Then actually do it.
Yeah.
Is that fair enough, is that enough time, Megan?
Yeah, right.
Yes, so we're making it, we're, well, we don't have to vote on, but we're making definite decision to do something.
Right. No.
Just as the, the, the guy who will be helping with the website, uh and and whatever forum the board decides to move on.
Yes, sir.
Um summer's where I wanna do it. I'm, I'm graduations Friday, I'm traveling for a bit, a bit, but summer is where I'm gung ho on, on getting it done.
So you'd be fine with us reacting on it in the July meeting?
Uh if, yeah, because I'm gone for a little bit of time in between now and the July meeting, um and if we make a decision in on July tenth, we're, we're full speed ahead on it.
Is that fair enough?
Sounds good.
Did you guys come to a decision on which path, school versus not?
I know which I, I wanna.
Well, go right down lines up.
Oh, I'm, I'm for doing our um.
Independent.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm for getting someone independent.
I for whatever gets it done. I know, Dan, you don't care, I know, you just, you just wanna give Pat the answer. I don't, I just. Yeah, I just don't want anybody say, that wasn't posted on, like.
No, and tell him thank you, that was like a great idea and we appreciate that.
Yeah. So you, you don't care, Dan, you're saying. I, I don't care as long as a meeting notice is posted within twenty minutes, kind of like, like however that happens, and the the only other thing I will comment is um Olivia, is there anybody else in the office that would be able to operate this website?
No, I mean, I could, but.
Besides you, even other than simple search.
No.
You can.
Mark would be able to.
Would he want to though, I don't know.
Probably would want.
Yeah.
You could also set up.
But the other two, I don't think so.
You can set up access so that, you know, if, if we wanted a committee or a
It could have an alternate, an unappointed, one of the board members, right.
unappointed, you could uh trustee to have access in.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, I'm just, and I'm just.
As an example, Bobby is a trustee who oversees the village office, so if he felt like he had the computer skills, he could be a backup person to do, to do the same thing that Olivia would.
Don't even think about it.
Or if Brett wanted to take that on.
I'm, I'm just saying, I've done a little survey of the land over there, and I think that maybe you might be so low on that. Oh, no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm agreeing, so.
Yeah, everybody understands what you're saying, I.
Like.
Brett, I'm okay.
Yeah, when we've looked over WordPress and we've talked to some people about WordPress, it is pretty user-friendly, so, I mean, you know.
There's, there's.
Yeah, I, I mean, and.
WordPress.
You had to, you could do it.
Oh yeah, I, I.
There's, there's like a big advantage to WordPress.
I think here's all, I, 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 I just said I want it.
I don't know.
WordPress is like the leading site kind of infrastructure that's used out there.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
In a such a wide variety of ways, and because of that, there's a bazillion plugins that you can use, such as calendar features or announcing features. There there, it's literally, there's infinite possibilities.
So.
Oh, also, the other thing in talking with Jeremy from Divide by Nine was
Yes.
Right.
that he can even set it up so that it's dummy-proof, so that if you gave someone access who is not super computer literate,
No one can mess up.
they can't go in and click something that's gonna delete the entire website.
That's it, yes.
Bobby, Bobby.
That's perfect.
I can, I can, I'm fine.
So you can limit those.
Um. The only, the only negative for WordPress and I, it it's a small negative in terms of what I had hoped to do years ago with it,
interactions by.
Mm.
is uh is you have to make sure you're up to date on security stuff, because it's such a huge, hugely used uh platform, it, it's gonna be targeted by people with bad approaches.
So he went over that as well, like he has contingencies, I think he puts more into it that we don't have to pay for, that is making it
Mm-hmm. Spyware, like very shit.
very secure, yeah.
Yeah, he can run it, he can run it off of our servers or off of his server.
Okay.
Sounds like he has backups planned, yeah, references.
Also, it's easy to find, and you can make it any language you want.
Yeah.
Yup.
Cause I thought was.
Well, we're sticking with English for right now.
No, but he, he, no, he, he, you can click on it.
But, but it's a dropdown, you can click and you can.
Oh.
Yeah.
I would like that, it's so cool.
Yeah, yeah, Mary Ann.
Can I ask a question, and I know this is none of my business, but.
Yeah, Mary Ann, please.
Not.
No, it's, it's your business.
Um so can he start it right away, like if you wait till July for him to vote on it, what's his turnaround time?
Well, we, well, when he, it's three, about three months, depending on how fast we get him information.
Three months to start, three months to post.
Right, but what I'm saying, if you put up voting on it.
Start to fit, oh, right, right.
Right, it does, I would.
But this is, this is one guy that we happen to talk to, there are others, I mean, we're.
Yeah, I'm still like making a phone call tomorrow, like I've got people that we're reaching out to as far as who we're gonna go with.
We would likely need to have three quotes for our procurement procedure.
Yeah. We have to, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
This was more about deciding if they were, if the board wanted to pursue the school.
Yeah, I just know your interest in getting it done in the summer and and the timeline of how backed up they are.
Well, if we acted on it in July, I mean, I wouldn't, well, maybe I'm.
I won't be able to do much work between now and July ten anyway.
Right, yeah, yeah, no.
Yeah, but I also have been doing updates, knowing that if I do all the updates right, I just go, here, make that in your format, to whoever it would be.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
You, right.
And that's the, that's, that's the thing, he's not trying to reinvent the wheel necessarily with our website, but more so just give it a fresh.
Alright. So, so Dan, are you, are you okay to talk to Pat daily?
Uplift at it.
Yeah, and just let him know that the majority of the board wants to go their own road, on their own route.
Alright. Okay, okay.
Okay, thank them for the offer, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just gave him some preliminary thoughts on it last week, cause I just, you know, I'm sort of like, I don't like to be left out there on the road, just, just my kind of thing.
No, personally, no.
Right.
Now that that decision is made, I'm very happy to be involved in whatever other interviews you have with other folks, um and then I can kind of communicate text stuff to them so they know.
Okay. Yeah, if you don't mind, you did send me that document of like, it was like the overview or bones of like what we're looking for, if you don't mind that I share that.
Yeah. Oh, no, that's fine, that's fine, and is there anything else I can do to help, please?
Okay. Yeah.
Without that, so I, I did, I just wanna tell you, I did get an email on the Catania property, and it's probably a scam.
That's.
She told, she just told me that she called the guy and he said, yeah, 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 you know, and he said, my dad, something, and I'm sorry to hear about your dad, please send me some ID and um probate, probate documents, and the probate court of state, you know, the executor, whatever, and she hasn't heard it, the guy's just disappeared, so there's the.
There you go.
Surprise.
Oh, Jesus.
There's the answer to the Catania, so she will be withdrawing.
Wow.
Thank you.
So, but where, where's that, so where does that leave us, uh?
That means it's not really for sale, it's still in limbo.
That leaves us more. More than one. Okay, that's what I, that's what I'm. I think.
It's in probate somewhere.
Yeah, it it, so I don't know what the probate laws of the state of New Jersey are, I know in New York, it goes to like wife, children, parents, brothers and sisters, names, uncle, cousin, if he's little, well.
Yeah. I'm just like, plan our checks, people.
But she hasn't taken these down yet.
I know, like, so I.
No, like, it's absolutely no sense to me.
I uh, I did talk to her about that, so they, generally the rule, relatives, as I understand it, is if there's a sus- if there's suspicion, they ask for ID and stuff, but she had no reason to believe that he was not telling the truth because the public records showed that it was Catania, woman, it, duh, duh, duh. Uh and I had a feeling.
So many, so many probably hanging around who's been coming to our meetings.
Uh, I don't know.
No, it's somebody who pushes papers or digital information and saw, oh, wait a minute, this guy had own stuff and you guys got me errors, like, hey, trust.
So. So.
That's why I'm not insane.
Uh she said, uh since he has not responded to my several correspondence, say, I will remove them off the market immediately, it's probably a fraud.
Uh.
Wow.
So that's what she said, uh but when she told me that Mr. Catania was the. Uh but when she told me that Mr. Catania was the listing, uh was the owner seeking to list the property and the prices were about one one thousandth of what the now deceased Mr. Catania actually wanted for the property.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Yeah.
My suspicion was that this was probably not.
I'll never forget that bit, but.
Eleven thousand was a lot different than what was it, one point five million.
I, I think that meeting exists in our YouTube archive.
Waterfront property.
Oh, God, I respect.
That was so wild, you remember when he came over to the missile building?
With him. Oh, I do, I remember, I sure.
Holy Toledo.
Yeah, I remember. Greta Garbo.
Yeah, three minutes talking about some some actress, anyway.
Greta, yeah, Greta Garbo.
Um trustees, do you have any other business you want to bring forward?
Um, oh, yeah, but go ahead.
Oh. I I have, well, you go ahead, Megan. I I wanna.
So we.
I'm telling my wife it's all of your fault, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
I know, I watched it second to me.
Um with the decision to go with um an independent website developer, we did talk to Jeremy at Divide by Nine and he's willing to meet with everyone, I don't know if that's something you want to do, if we can do that, if you have any questions, um you can forward them to me, whatever, whatever you wanna do. But I did say, like, I'd let him know if you wanna meet with him for.
The only way he could meet with us would be in, it'd be in at a board meeting.
I think the proposal is the way to go, if if he also wants to offer, you know, maybe the board wants to have him come.
Right. Just do the proposal.
Yeah. He could come and do a presentation or something, but we need it for him.
Well, they, no, they, he could sit down with a couple of, with a couple of the board.
A couple, right, but he can't do it with the entire board is what I'm saying.
Right, unless they know.
Unless he lets me, right.
And he could, he could do three.
Cause he have a forum, right, yeah.
Yeah, three would be fun.
Right, right.
We we already did that.
I I I I I'll bow out right now.
I I I I I'll bow out too, like, I'm perfectly fine.
Already did that. Okay, so I just wanted to put it out there.
Well, that's the three people that would have turned up.
You're no, no offense taken, uh okay.
Yeah.
Bobby, you wanna hear about XML and XT?
If you can have
I'm good.
It's really cool.
No.
Three or more proposals for us on the July tenth meeting, the board will be able to officially move on one.
I've got you. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that would be phenomenal, yes.
Sounds awesome.
I'll do that.
I just, I'm curious, remember that lady on Albany Street who had a subject thing? What happened with that?
Yeah, you know, she ever, she called me a couple times, I haven't heard back from her, but I'll, I.
I don't know, I think we
Let me go, subject.
We kind of communicated that that was, and she knew it, it was kind of out of our control.
Awesome.
Um
Yeah.
I- and it sounded like there was some sneakiness in the sale, I'll 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 summarize it that way.
Yeah, I don't think everything was disclosed at that.
I was gonna say, I don't think there was a full disclosure.
Yeah.
But I I think there's legal claims there, but it's nothing that we would be able to help or assist with.
Right, yeah, nothing the village can.
There was a homeowner that uh N A on the uh school trips.
Yeah, whenever that, whenever they have that, like not disclosed, just just don't do that, just no, no need.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
I I know. Deb, do you have anything else?
Move on.
No, I was just curious about that.
I just wanted to make sure, Rob, that we get a a proclamation for Omorok Pekennis, she's gonna be a hundred, you and I both.
Oh, my gosh, I think the question.
You got to go to the.
I can't, I already talked to Joyce, you can't go and I can't go, I told Joyce, so she asked me if we can just get her a proclamation, like, you know, clap.
Yeah, it's curious, you know, I know. I think it's curious.
Absolutely.
So she turns a hundred on July first.
Wow.
What?
Wait, did she get a picture in the Wilford Brim, what, not Wilford Brim?
Wow.
Smokers.
Who's the guy that the Smokers is, is it Wilford Brim?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's in the party, well, the the honor, they're honoring on the, her on the twenty first.
Do me a favor, email this to myself, Olivia and Elena and we'll find out if the board needs to officially act on it, 'cause we've never done an actual ceremonial proclamation before that I can recall.
Just a proclamation, just, I mean.
Does the board need to make a motion to prevent?
It's um. Um well, her birthday is July first, but they're honoring her on July twenty first at the Huesid, Historical Society.
Oh, so we can do it in on the July tenth meeting.
Yes, I just wanna make sure it's done before then, that's all.
Perfect.
You need to make a specific.
We will do that.
You need to get her a, get it in the mail at birthday.
We'll do that.
Get her a cake too.
Yeah, get her a cake.
Um is it, and if any board member wants to go and represent the village on that event, that'd be great, I know the town.
Get a little bit.
Yeah, if anybody wants to go, I I can.
My old house is right across the street, maybe he lives next door.
There you go.
Oh.
There you go, that'd be great, alright.
That would be great.
Great.
Still walking, yeah, she still walks.
Yes.
That's, that's awesome, that's phenomenal. Alright, anything else?
We did, I'd love to look forward to.
What's that?
I wanted to make sure that was that, so I don't remember. You got the fifty year warranty.
Alright, I'm looking for motion under executive session, discuss for some matters and no business, speaking of that at the end of executive session, Deb.
What?
Give a second, Megan, all in favor?
Aye.
I pulled the sentence, carries, we're moving into executive session at eight nineteen PM.